Welcome to this town hall meeting. We are here to discuss the Immigration Transition and Amendment and Validation Bill 2025. My name is Jevy Ebanks and it's my pleasure to moderate this evening's town hall. The purpose of tonight is to provide a consultation period so that the government can provide transparency, encourage engagement, and ensure that the perspective of Caymanians, residents, industry representatives, and other interested parties are considered before the bill is finalized. So thank you so much for joining us this evening and being a part of that conversation. Throughout tonight, we hope to get feedback on the objectives and the provisions outlined in the bill, including matters relating to Caymanian status, permanent residency, residency and employment rights certificates, work permit requirements, financial standing, and compliance measures. Our panelists are inviting you to issue comments that may address the policy intent, practical implications, and other relevant considerations. Before we go ahead with the presentations tonight, I just want to say that we are currently operating on a two questions per person standard for this evening. So whether you choose to use that as two individual questions or a question and a follow-up, we ask that you be mindful that there may be others who want to have questions answered as well. Also, just in case you're asking questions that contain very specific or personal information, we ask you to be mindful that this is being broadcast to the general public and so you should take extreme care in saying "personal information" publicly. There are ways for you to ask those questions this evening, for you to either jot it down on a piece of paper and we'd be happy to provide it to the relevant person who it's addressed. Of course, we also have other government representatives who are sat over here to the front who may be able to speak to you one-on-one and get those questions answered. So with that being said, if you have other responses beyond tonight's conversation that you want included in the consideration of this bill, we ask that you send all responses via email before the close of business on the fourteenth of November 2025 at immigrationconsultation@gov.ky. For those joining us via social media, we do have teams monitoring social media, so please feel free to share your questions there as well and we'll ensure to answer them. Our panel includes the Minister of Caymanian Employment and Immigration and the Member of Parliament for Prospect, the Honorable Michael Miles, as well as Chief Officer in the Ministry of Caymanian Employment and Immigration, Mr. Wesley Howell. Also on the stage is Senior Policy Advisor, Ms. Rolna de Costa. Please welcome them to the stage. At this time, I invite the Minister to give his opening address.
Good evening, everyone. I do better standing up. So indulge me. I want to apologize ahead of time, just struggling, trying to recover from a cough. So if I'm coughing a little too much, I'm going to take a break, but I think I can get through this for the next hour and change. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and certainly supporting this town hall, but also providing your support with questions and certainly clarifications and so forth. We want to make sure that everyone gets this, that all of our people understand our immigration reform. It's not this big scary monster. It is pretty straightforward and we are hoping and praying that everyone gets this. And if you don't, please give me a call. We'll organize another meeting for you and we can certainly discuss this. Before I get into it as well, please keep Jamaica and Cuba in your thoughts and prayers. I'm sure that everyone has seen, just to share destruction that have gone on in that country over the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I'm sure that you know, folks have, if it's not some of you, I'm sure that you know some folks who have people or family that lives in that country as much as you can, please continue to reach out. We have a team, the premier, the governor is going down. It's going to be taking some much-needed supplies to them to the government over there tomorrow morning. So please keep that, keep our team in your prayers because I know the wind and rain and all of that is still in our vicinity. I wanted to get into this because I also want to make sure that everyone, certainly in the listening public also understand is that we've been doing public consultation for the last month or the last five or six weeks now and it's been glorious, it's been great. We've gotten a lot of wonderful feedback. We've problem met with at least aided companies. We've met with just about every sector, from tourism to the financial services, you know, to construction, human resources. I mean, everyone has been at the table and they've been really great and given us feedback. Between myself and my chief officer, Mr. Howell, who's really the specialist in this, Mr. Howell is going to give you a lot of the technical overview. What I want to provide tonight is how this evolved coming about in the last six months. And to also share with you, you know, that this was not just about, you know, just wanting to change the immigration laws or regulations. This was what problems are we going to solve? How can we be thoughtful about this and not have a knee-jerk reaction? So tonight, I want to give you some background and I'm going to go through the policy intent. Mr. Wes is going to go through the proposed bill, next steps, and then we're going to get some question feedback. As Mr. Jevy said, you know, if we can limit it to two questions so we can get everyone to get their questions answered as well. And I know that we're going to be collecting questions from our online viewers. That would be appreciated. I want to share this statistic with you because this is one of the things that, as we campaigned over the last year, this is one of the things that we started to look at when we looked at immigration reform. And these are relevant statistics to this. Currently, one of the biggest challenges that we have in our WORC, which is Work Department, is the amount of temporary work permits that we're processing. Currently, we have about sixty-five thousand applications that come through WORC every year. It's about sixty-five thousand on average. Of that sixty-five thousand, forty thousand of that are temp work permits. Out of that forty thousand, thirty thousand convert to full work permits. Now, here's what that means. There's a delay in us actually getting to full work permits. Ninety-nine percent of the organizations that are applying for a work permit want a full work permit, but because we can't seem to get that under thirty days, they're applying for a temp. Now, I want you to imagine this. We have thirty thousand of those temps that are converting. The Immigration Department is touching all of those work permits at least three times. The first time to get a person in the country, we touch that work permit. Then, most companies are also using us to regulate their probationary periods because then they extend it to another three months. And then, once that three months, once that extension is over, we're now, they're now applying for a one-year or a full work permit. It puts an enormous pressure on our Immigration Department that we are not efficient. We have to get back to where we're efficient. Temporary work permits were actually meant to be one to three months. That person comes in for a temporary period of time and leaves. A doctor comes in to do a procedure for a couple of weeks or even a month or two and leaves. An attorney comes in to work a case and leaves. A person, a band or a musician comes in for one to five days to do a couple of gigs and leave. That's what temporary work permits were made for. Successive governments have allowed temporary work permits to actually be really everything because it's driving revenue. Immigration can no longer be about just revenue. Immigration must be about protecting Caymanians and protecting our borders. So our organization, our coalition have decided we need to change the focus of immigration. And that focus has to be with us, reducing temporary work permits. And Mr. Wes will go into some details of that. Now, here's what it drives. Because over the last decade or so, there's been significant silos within the government. Our government, your government, over probably the last three to five years, spends about forty million dollars a year on scholarships. And because we don't actually share information, I don't know who's overseas. I have no clue. Currently, based on the numbers that I have seen, we have over eighteen hundred young people in some sort of tertiary education school. Now, here's what it does for the numbers. Because I don't know, Mr. Wes doesn't know, and our Work Department doesn't know, it's driving more work permits because the business community wants, needs talent. Just this year, we have, we have, just in the fall semester, we've approved twenty million dollars. That have put over one thousand one hundred and eighty students in an overseas placement. The only student that I know that's overseas right now from the fall semesters, my daughter Haley, who is doing her masters. So what Minister Anglin and I have decided is that that silo needs to be kicked down and kicked down fast. I have to have a clear understanding what the labor market is and what we need to do to prepare for all of our young people to come home and get jobs. Because what is happening, I'm getting calls from all, from children, all young people all over the world, saying, "Am I going to have a job when I finish this degree?" I have grandparents calling me, parents calling me, young people calling me, friends of friends calling me, saying, "Minister, you, like, are we going to be able to work?" We have to get temporary work permits under control and we have to ensure that the talent that we want is fast-tracked straight to a full work permit. Hence, we need to be more efficient. As long as we're processing forty thousand temps a year, immigration is going to be in the same state that it has always been, chaos. And we can't do that anymore. Our government is prepared to move immigration to a next level and it has to be where it makes sense, in particular for our people. Now, there's another, there's another two stats that I also want to share with you that's affecting a lot of the expenditure within the Cayman Islands government. And it's what we found. Now, I've known this for a long time, but the public doesn't have an appreciation for the mass levels of expenditure. Where it says the Department of Financial Assistance, we spend now, and this is, the Department of Financial Assistance was recently rebranded. It also came from the Needs Assessment Unit, so it was rebranded to the department. We're spending approximately sixty million dollars on aid. We have a lot of able-bodied people that are receiving aid and a lot of it is because we have a lot of cheap labor coming in. Therefore, it's shrinking the labor market. It's not sustainable for us as a country. We have to be able to change this and we have to change it now. So yes, immigration may make a hundred million dollars a year, but we're spending sixty million dollars a year on that, on welfare. So we can have, on any given day, a twenty-year-old, twenty-five-year-old that's able-bodied, can't get a job in their country, walk into the Department of Financial Assistance and we are having to support that, that young person. We can't do this long-term. So a lot of the reforms are coming based on us. We have to be able to fix significant problems that is within our country. The last stat that I want to share with you is this stat that we continue to grapple over as a government. We spend approximately seventy-five million dollars a year on indigent health insurance. When our people can't get jobs and they can't afford healthcare, you, the government, me, the government, we have to support them. We provide that to them. What is also unfortunate as well is that out of that seventy-five million dollars, ten million dollars of that goes to the expat community who also can't provide or support their own healthcare. We can't sustain this long-term. When we look at immigration reform, we want it to be thoughtful about it. We have to look at the numbers and these are the numbers that jump out to us. Our children, we're spending the money, they're educated, they're, they're, they are driven to be successful, they come back to our country and they can't get employment. We have to now start to look at where we're going wrong. So what we've done is take the politics off the table. Let's start talking facts. This statistic here is also what we've worked on. We have to make immigration efficient. Therefore, our immigration boards process less than fifteen percent of the sixty-five thousand work permits. So over the last six months, I've visited the boards, talked to board members, I've sat in on boards to see what the operation is. And after six months, I've decided the boards aren't efficient. We have to make the boards more efficient. Because our administrators, who are also part of our boards, are very efficient. But our boards are also taking a lot of administrators out of immigration. So it makes our administration less efficient as well. How do we expedite that? We have to make sure that the boards are better and we have to ensure that the boards are non-political. Now, part of this process, you would think that it's common sense, it's not. What we've done as from successive governments, we play politics with it. I have no interest in playing politics with immigration or any other department that falls under Caymanian employment. Our coalition has made it very clear, we have to now look at how do we get Caymanians back to work? How do we ensure that Caymanians are moving up? Because we have to make sure that Caymanians can support themselves, pay for healthcare, make sure that they can thrive in the economy that we have built, that our grandparents have built, that our seafarers have built. This in a nutshell is why we're driving the reforms. It has to happen at this point. Now, I want you to look at the landscape of another major stat that have also ensured that we're driving reform. Between 2015 and 2025, nine thousand and eight of four individuals were granted permanent residence. We all know what leads after permanent residence. Your status. Some say it's too much, some say it's not enough, Caymanians are feeling overwhelmed. I'm going to go with what Caymanians are telling me. I'm feeling that I don't, that this is no longer my country. So we have to ensure that Caymanians are protected. Out of that, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one individuals qualified through the point system, four thousand qualified from marriages of Caymanians. Now, here's another problem that this have increased. So we now have, and I'm sure that this is no surprise to you because you, everyone in this room have probably heard it, is a lot of sham marriages, we're being inundated with it. The Immigration Department is currently investigating at least two hundred plus sham marriages. I cannot give them the personnel to do more. The reforms have to be able to manage some of this. We have to arm our boards, we have to arm the Director of Immigration in order to ensure that we can do this better. Now, I can only tell you some of the mess that I have found. Every successive government, every government that I've got in, they've kicked the can down the road. What I've said to the coalition, if we're going to do immigration reform, we need to do it properly and it needs to be based on facts. We can't do immigration reform based on feelings or based on, "I don't like this person." It has to also be consistent. You can't do immigration reform just for the public sector or just the private sector. So one of the first changes that we made in our immigration reform was forcing the public service to put in term limits. Because you can't have a public service that is gazetting laws, creating laws, establishing laws, but don't follow their own laws. So the public service have to be part of the reform and now they are. We also have to have successive training within the civil service. You can't have an individual that jumps from the private sector after six or seven years, knowing that they're going to go into rollover, come into the civil service, spend another five years, fast-track them through PR and then they're on to citizenship, leave the civil service, go back into the private sector and now they are full-blown Caymanians. We no longer can tolerate that. Now, some people say, "Michael, I disagree with you," and I can respect that. My goal is to protect forty thousand Caymanians. I have nothing against the foreign contingency, they have helped us build our country, but my goal and the government's goal is to protect the forty thousand Caymanians in our country to ensure that as citizens, we feel that we have a say. Now, I just want you to just have a look at what this is. When I saw this slide, it is scary. Now, imagine saying to every child at John Gray, Clifton Hunter, SyFex, CIS, Pratt, Catholic, all of the high schools, that not only are you not going to have less of a future, but we're going to give you more and more competition to compete with. They already have eight billion people to compete against. We're piling up on this. Now, again, we have to leave the politics off the table. We have to start to look at the people. Are our people in a better situation than we were ten years ago? The country has improved, we've built a lot of stuff. We have a lot of shiny new toys, built a lot of buildings. But the people ourselves haven't moved. And I am having to deal with those calls every single day, many times a day, of people very concerned that them or their children are not living the life that we as Caymanians, we as the government, are saying that they should live. When I have folks that are twenty-five years old, that are on subsidy from the Cayman Islands government because they can't pay their rent. When I have a young person that have contacted me after applying for a hundred jobs and they're all entry-level and cannot get a job. And I amplify that by a hundred times. We have a thousand young people that are saying, "Is this working for us?" I have to look at the stats and say, "It's not, it's not working for us." How do we then make it work for us? We have to be thoughtful about the laws, so we've decided that we have to be able to do something different, but something balanced. And as I said to a lot of folks, a lot of focus groups that we have done this presentation with, our goal isn't to cripple the financial services industry, the tourism industry. We want those industries. We certainly want those industries to also prioritize Caymanians. And for a very long time, they're not and we have to get back to that. I am not under any illusion that we are going to fill every job in the Cayman Islands with Caymanians. We have more jobs than we have people. But I am here to say, and I've said it to a lot of employers, big and small, if you don't hire our people, you're not hiring anybody. It's as simple as that. Without reform, we're being squeezed. Without reform, the sectors are being overwhelmed. I've showed you the numbers. I've shown you two figures, just social services, and I've also showed you what we're looking at just in healthcare. And that doesn't include government employees, that's just indigent care. The Police Department is about seventy million dollars. I can rattle figures off to you on what we're paying of organizations that don't pay back. Those are just services because of population explosion that we're now having to deal with. Now, like I've said to a lot of folks, we want, we need, we appreciate the private sector. They are a major contributor in the Cayman Islands government. But this has to be a partnership, a collaboration, it can't just be a free-for-all. You can't build a hotel and say, "Well, I'm not, well, I'm not going to hire your people." You can't put down a bank and say, "Well, you know, I'm going to bring in my own GM" when we have, you know, a person that's qualified for those types of jobs. See, no one don't have to tell me about what goes on here, I've seen it. I've sat in, I've talked to the experts, I've sat in with employers, I've seen the negotiations that have gone on with previous governments. People make promises, "Well, yes, I'm going to, you know, hire X amount of people." And then when we give them a concession, those people aren't hired. We're overwhelming this infrastructure and then we're turning around and saying to our people, "I'll just give you more welfare." It's unsustainable. We know what goes on in our roads. Everyone, I'm sure, in this room has some level of bumper-to-bumper traffic. We also know what is happening to our housing market. I don't expect a twenty-one, twenty-two-year-old that has just got out of high school or just got out of university to be able to afford, you know, a house. But I do believe that it has to be possible. It has to be possible and right now it's not, it's out of reach. The average young person do not see that it's possible for them to own a house or purchase land in our own country. So what do we do? Do we sit back and continue to make promises to you? How do we make the changes that are common sense, that are balanced, that ensures that we protect the vibrant private sector, but we prioritize our people? This is where we're going. One of the biggest fears that I often hear, and I've heard over the last six months, more in my face, but I've heard it, you know, probably over the last eight years or so, in particular from young people, is that, "I don't feel that I'm Caymanian anymore." I don't feel that I go into stores and they don't talk my language. I go to interviews and I have to ask for clarification because I can't understand who they are. Or I want a promotion, but my supervisor seem to be leading towards the other people that come from that person's culture. This is what they're saying. Our identity is being lost. Do we listen or do we play politics? What the coalition have decided is that we're going to listen. But we're not just going to listen for the sake of listening, we're now going to act. We're going to do something about it that's going to be thoughtful. Like I've told the private sector, I don't know what's going to happen in the next four years, eight years. I do know that the current laws, the current structure that we've put in place, I believe that's going to serve us well. I also believe that if there are significant changes or any changes at all need to be made, that I believe that we have a competent government that's going to come back to the table and say, "You know, something, this isn't working for us. Let's change it because it's not working." Or, you know, it's a consequence that we didn't see coming. Now, I will also say to you, after the last six weeks of a lot of focus groups, talking to a lot of experts, a lot of lawyers, a lot of folks from accounting firms, there's not a lot of people that are able to put holes in what we've designed because they've been a part of it, they've suggested a lot of these reforms. The ministry has a vision and our vision is to be empowered, is a resilient Caymanians, we're empowered Caymanians and a balanced workforce strategies, support a prosperous community and deliver in sustainable growth. Every time I share this slide, I often say to folks, "We have to have sustainable growth for everyone." We can't have sustainable growth for just a handful or just a few. It has to be across the board. We also have to have workforce strategies. I've also said to everyone since I got in this position, I am not doing immigration reform for four years. I don't think it needs to do four years. Immigration reform can be done in less than two. In less than six months, we've put good immigration reform on the table. But our goal is, is to make sure that it's sustainable. But our goal is, is to make sure that it's sustainable. Our goal is also to ensure that there's a strategy for employment, that we're not just kicking that can down the road. So what our ministry have become is about employment. How do we ensure that young people know what is out there? What is, when does AI take off? When do we start to create those jobs? Our mission is to deliver people center focus. How do we deliver that? We have to start to listen to you, the voter. We have to start to have a clear understanding what it is that you want and do what you want. You don't need more buildings. You need us and our focus on ensuring that you have a future. And that future can't be every four years. It has to be ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty years, that your children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren deserve some level of hope. So therefore, what I have done, my customer is the forty thousand Caymanians. My, my, my organization is, is looking at forty thousand people. How do we keep you happy? How do we ensure that everything we do is something that you know, that you want? And we're not gonna give you all your hopes and dreams, but the opportunities are there. How we look at the services of Cayman states enhance the workforce skills and promote economic well-being? I say to a number of folks all the time, what is well-being? How do we focus on that more? How do we ensure that people have a clear understanding? When I start high school or primary school, and I have a vision of where I wanna be, how do we make that a reality? Well, we're spending the money. We're spending forty million dollars a year on it, and that's just the public sector. I'm sure the private sector is spending probably another ten or fifteen. How do we make it a reality that people have economic well-being? That's what this bill is about. It's about promoting that. We foster strong partnerships. I said to the private sector, this is about collaboration. This is about them. This is about them coming to the table and being reasonable and being honest. Because they're making a lot of money. I'm not here to take money off the table. I'm simply here to say, our people need to thrive, not survive this. We need to thrive in it as well. And you can't judge one person and say, well, because of one person, forty thousand is lazy or can't do this. And that's what I'm hearing a lot more. We foster strong relationships and facilitate information. Our government have decided that we have to start to share information. Minister Anglen and I, we've sat down and we've said, we cannot have an embargo between our ministries. I need to know every child who are overseas. Because prior to them coming back, and I don't mean a couple of months before, I mean four years before, I need to know who they are. We need to start to prepare for them. We need to put in viable programs. We need to connect them to services, whether it's in the public sector or private sector, that when they come back, they have an internship, they have an apprenticeship, they have employment. We have to start to prepare. But if I don't know who they are, if I don't know how many accountants are provided with scholarships, how do I say to a KPMG, hey, we have ten young people coming back? We have to know who's out there. And we need to know that immediately as they're granted a scholarship, that information is shared with us. Sharing while ensuring compliance with immigration, labor, and pension. One of the major things that we've now connected is that we've also connected, in particular, our departments. Labor and pension are underneath the Ministry of Caymanian Employment. When we designed immigration law, we started looking at the labor laws. We started looking at the pension laws. We needed to make sure that it wasn't gonna adversely affect any of those laws. All of these things have to be done. We're meeting with DCI because some of the things of what we're doing impact them. HSA, the Health Insurance Commission, the police department, we're breaking walls down, we're forging relationships. Part of this bill is forcing government departments to now communicate with each other because it's not, it's not our strongest point. So we now have to be deliberate about this. Because if we're not, we can change all the laws of what we want, but if people aren't coming to the table and sharing information, it will never work. I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. West. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you guys coming again. Enjoy the rest of this presentation.
Good afternoon, good evening, good evening. So I am going to sit for the time being. The policy intent really is what Minister Maas just laid out. But to put it in straight words, it's the intentions of the reform, it's to update and refine aspects of the existing legislative framework and to be responsive to some of the social and economic circumstances that we find ourselves in. And Minister Maas did a great job outlining what those are before this. So I'll go right into the changes in legislation. Right up front, I'll say, if you came tonight looking for information on changes to the PR point system and term limits, that's not part of this piece of legislation. But I can assure you that that piece of work, we've been tasked to do that, and that is soon behind. The approach that Minister Maas wanted to take was not to wait on a comprehensive bill and take a year and a half, two years to do it. We have bits that are ready to go now, and we took that, those bits forward with the other bits coming in the next round of changes. First up and foremost is the change of the principal law. This is the base law. The Immigration Transition Act is going to be renamed to the Cayman Protection Act. And we were on Mr. Connor's show, I think it was last Friday, and he reminded me that that was the law when he was last Chief Immigration Officer in two thousand and three, that was the name of the legislation. The changes to work permit are coming up next. And one of the issues that is, is a burning issue. Part of this relates to the multitude of temporary work permits. But if you follow immigration in the media, you will see that they are, actually, I didn't even check the courts today to see what the sentence was for the individual who was caught facilitating work permits of convenience for individuals from a particular sector, from a particular country. But that is an issue for us. We, we know, and Cayman is not unique, that we have individuals from the Philippines, from Nepal, who are being exploited quite significantly. Some of them are, are working with local actors in order to get work permits for them. They usually come in on a temporary work permit, and during that period, they look for legitimate work. So we put in some, some issues, some controls around that particular issue. So within the first two years of their employment, an employee would not be able to change employers save for prescribed circumstances. These are exceptional circumstances where they're not being paid, they're being abused, and so on. We don't want to lock them into a bad employer, employee situation. But we really wanna shut down the jumping from one position to the next. The other group of individuals who have made significant representation to us are small, medium businesses who are typically the ones flying individuals in from around the region, in some cases around the world, paying their settling expenses and so on. And they then shop around when they're here, cancel their own work permits and go and apply for one for an employer who is paying a bit more down the road. So employers who are out of pocket for that settling cost are ones that are asking for some relief in relation to this. So this strengthens the provisions that are there now in relation to job hopping. The second one is in relation to marriages of convenience amongst work permit holders. So it's not just marriages of convenience amongst persons with PR and persons with, who have, who are Caymanian. The scenario here with the marriages of convenience among work permit holders is if I'm here on, on work permit and I'm approaching my term limit, so I'm at year seven, year eight, I'm, I'm fairly certain I'm not gonna be able to qualify for permanent residency, but I want to continue working longer than that. Then I enter into a marriage of convenience with someone whose work permit is on year one or year two. I can then piggyback as their spouse on a spouse of a work permit holder exemption and carry on for an additional six or seven years past my term limit. So this provision that we were introducing here, if you're going to file married, then the limit would be that of the lower, not of the higher. So you don't get to have an additional number of years added on for that convenience. Changes in relation to PR and RERC. You would have seen the statistic, the graphic with the number of persons that became Caymanian, and the vast majority of those are through marriage. So in two thousand and twenty-four, there were six hundred and sixty-nine marriages, including approximately a hundred and fifty visitors who got married in the Cayman Islands. Work, and I just checked with the acting director and her team here, are investigating well over two hundred marriages of convenience. So the numbers are actually quite high. So hence the reason why we are pushing out some of the timelines as it relates to RERC and as it relates to Caymanian status coming later on. So what, what this does is in relation to persons holding RERC. So currently, the permanent residency certificates that are issued are issued without an end date, so they're indefinite. Because they're indefinite, that individual, within a year of receiving that document, could go and get naturalized. So if we're, if we're starting a work permit at year one, persons can apply for permanent residency at year eight. If they're granted permanent residency in year nine, by year ten, they're naturalized. They then have to wait an additional five years to get to the point of fifteen years in the islands and be naturalized in order to qualify for the right to be Caymanian. This pushes that out to fifteen years instead of the, the current, effectively, one year that it is now. So in practice, what this means is an individual would have to have their PR facility and be in country up to nine years, up to fifteen years, sorry, at which time they would apply for PR. Again, the document that they would get at that point would be a PR open-ended. So they've already been in country for fifteen years. If they're granted PR again at that point, then that is PR without an end date, which then allows them to transition over to be naturalized, and then they could apply for the right to be Caymanian through that. So I will quickly add that there is a school of thought that no one should be applying for right to be Caymanian through naturalization. The drafting, the policy directives that we have and that we've drafted, we were not told to write the laws in such a way to prevent individuals from progressing through under the point system and through onto PR. This simply lengthens the runway and limits, again, sort of, of who can qualify for a BOTC Cayman Islands passport before they could effectively qualify for the right to be Caymanian. So progressing on, continuation of RERC for the children of Caymanians. So this delves into the aspect of individuals whose marriage to a Caymanian or a PR holder has fallen away and, or is no longer intact. And they have a child of that union, and they've applied for continuation on the basis that they have that child, Caymanian child. And this is, in some cases, we've seen, that's a bit of feedback. In some cases, we've seen where individuals who have no, effectively, they're, they're DNA donors and haven't had any connection with the child. But when the marriage falls apart, they realize that this is a bit of a loophole that they could, they could exploit and will file for a continuation on the basis that they have a Caymanian child. These provisions seek to ensure that they are indeed a part of the child's life in a positive way. And the legislation does provide for our government agencies, be that DCFS, DCR, or the courts, the family, the courts, to provide information to ensure that, 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 that relationship is a legitimate one and is in the best interest of the Caymanian child. If an application is, if an individual isn't meeting their application, their parental requirements, i.e., in some cases where the divorce has happened, there's a court order that the spouse can pay, has to pay a certain amount of child support and so on. As drafted, there's a six-month window for which they can rectify those issues before following on for the revocation process to start. Applicants must also demonstrate good character and provide recent medical certificates to ensure that they're in good health in order to continue on with the RERC continuation. For clarity as well, we're also specifying that the RERC continuation is based on a children of the marriage union and not a child, another child with another individual. So children that are not born to the union would not be allowed to be used as a means to qualify for the continuation. There are some expanded grounds for revocation of PR and RERC. So this goes along with the provisions of the social inquiry and those things to happen. Individuals may have their PR revoked if they fail to support, if the marriage or civil partnership is deemed to be a marriage of, a civil partnership of convenience. If the RERC ends before seven years, the, the RERC is revoked. If it's now between seven and fifteen years under which PR and RERC are being instituted for, then there's some discretion to be weighed in as to whether or not that, that continuation happens. Opportunity to reapply has to happen within three months of the revocation. This is a provision, an amendment to Section forty of the law, adding some discretion to the Cayman status and permanent residency board and the Director of Work in relation to having some discretion around marriages that come to an end in cases where, for example, they have been severe abuse within the relationship, and the courts have looked at those situations and said that the fact that there is no current discretion in the law is not in keeping with natural justice and those other types of facilities. Therefore, some discretion has been introduced so that the, the board can weigh in and have some discretion around whether or not between that seven and fifteen years, an individual would be able to, to keep their, their facility. Changes to Cayman status. This is in relation to persons and how long they have to hold Cayman status, hold RERC or PR before they're able to apply for Cayman status. So currently, individuals with PR can apply at year fifteen for right to be Caymanian if they're naturalized, and they have fifteen years in country. That's being extended to twenty years. So if you apply for your open-ended PR certificate at year fifteen, you can then be naturalized. You then have an additional five years to remain in country before you can apply for the right to be Caymanian. So the runway is being extended by an additional five years. In relation to BOTC citizens by, with connectivity to another OT. So for example, if we had a person here working who was a British overseas territorial citizen from Bermuda, that individual cannot be naturalized as a BOTC citizen for the Cayman Islands. So this provision takes into consideration that legal quandary that we have in relation to no multiple naturalizations and allow them to apply how naturalizations and allow them to apply having satisfied permanent residency and so on after twenty years without having to have a Cayman Islands naturalization because they're already a B O T C citizen. It's a bit of a technical one, that one. And currently, persons who are in a civil partnership or married to Caymanian can apply for the right to be Caymanian without being naturalized at year seven. This legislation increases that to year fifteen. Confirmation of Caymanian status. This is this is a particularly vexing situation for Caymanians who are Caymanians by generational means, by descent, in that they have no means to prove that they are Caymanian, and it's extremely vexing for them to have to apply and present documents to the director of work to be acknowledged as Caymanians. So this provision doesn't completely remove that requirement to apply. But what it does is provide for a a easier means of receiving that document. So you can effectively write and request that document if, for example, work has the department has received documentation from you. For example, if you got your children acknowledged to enter the government school system or to apply for a government contract, or if indeed your spouse is is non-Caymanian and you've applied for R A R C through that, you would have you would have supplied documents to prove that you are Caymanian. And in that case, if we have those documents, then we can just write you back and provide you with the confirmation that you are, the acknowledgement that you are are indeed Caymanian. So when I checked the numbers, we were up at some seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand acknowledgement applications within the last sort of twenty years. So a significant number of the forty percent, the forty thousand Caymanians have already been dealt with through some form of acknowledgement for either themselves or somebody connected to them. Loss and revocation of Caymanian status. So currently, in the Immigration Transition Act, individuals who are granted Caymanian status through the board, i.e., these are not generational Caymanians. And and the the word in the law that is used to define this group are those by entitlement. And I know that we use the word entitled Caymanians differently when we're referring to individuals. But in the law, and Mr. Connor gave me a bit of background on this, the entitlement came from the legal provision that says you're entitled to apply for Caymanian status, you're not entitled to Caymanian status. So for those who were entitled to apply for Caymanian status and have been granted Caymanian status, if you're outside of the islands, i.e. not legally an ordinary resident, that definition is actually in the law, then your Caymanian status could be revoked by because of that absence. And before the anxiety level goes up, there are some provisions within that that have carve outs for education, post qualification, education, working after education, medical treatment and so on. And by way of connection, I'll also highlight that the current law has that same provision, not only for the children who have continuation of entitlement after the age of eighteen, but for the parents as well. So parents, I'll I'll walk you through a scenario that that may help to shed light. So a couple on work permit has a child in the Cayman Islands. That child is born to work permit holders. They progress on to to have PR. They can add the child as a dependent on PR. If they acquire right to be Caymanian through grant before the child reaches eighteen, the child can apply to be a Caymanian through the parents for someone under the age of eighteen as a dependent. At age eighteen, the child loses that dependent status because they're now an adult and would have to apply to keep their right to be Caymanian after the age of eighteen. It's called continuation regularly. If that individual goes away to university for four or five years and then ends up working abroad for or living abroad, not legally ordinary resident in the Cayman Islands, they could lose their right to be Caymanian after seven years now. The changes in law reduces that to five, which coincidentally matches the provision in the existing law under which their parents, should they have moved away from the Cayman Islands, would also lose their grant to be right for right to be Caymanian. So currently, the law says parents who acquired the right to be Caymanian through grant by a board could lose it if they're away for five years. And parents of children of those parents can lose it after seven. The amendment would make both of those five. Hopefully, that's clear. If not, we can answer, we can take it up and answer question and answer. Financial standing, declaration requirements. The current policy from work in relation to adding dependents is three thousand five hundred per month in income, combined income, inclusive of those who make gratuities to add the first dependent. And then the additional dependent is five hundred dollars. The change that is coming is, one, the amount will be prescribed in legislation, and the amounts of requirement threshold increases to five thousand for the first dependent and additional one thousand for each additional dependent. We have seen lots of information, and if the compliance enforcement folks were here, they would stand up and clap their hands in relation to individuals whose work permit comes in with a salary of, say, two thousand dollars a month. When they they want to add their first dependent, we get a a pay slip that has the magic number of thirty five hundred dollars. And that amount is put forward as their base salary so that they can then qualify for that. So in order to have a strict, no tolerance to those sorts of false information, we're upping and introducing significant financial penalties of ten thousand dollars, one year imprisonment or both for submitting for submitting false information on your financial declaration for your dependent. Other key facilities. So currently, the the only facility that is required to submit an annual declaration is permanent residency through the point system. So how that works is if you have qualified for PR, so for example, you, one of the things you've qualified for is investment in a local company or local property, and you've divested yourself of that investment, you no longer maintain the asset that has the value to qualify for the points. You could potentially lose your PR because you no longer meet the threshold for the points. So this is annual declaration that is made on the anniversary of your PR, same time that your fees are due. But that annual declaration doesn't extend to any other facility. So the changes in annual declaration introduces annual declarations for R A R C holders, persons married to or in civil partnerships where they Caymanian. Also introduces the annual declarations for some of the high net worth investment, residency certificates and 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 so on, which also then have the requirement that they maintain a certain level of investment to keep that that facility. So in relation to marriage or civil partnership, the annual declaration is not requiring any information as it relates to investments and so on. You're effectively sending in the equivalent of an affidavit saying that your marriage is still intact, and you still qualify for that through marriage. The penalties for false information in that are.
Penalties, no, don't have penalties.
Yeah. It is an offense for not filing and grounds for revocation. And we have received feedback from others in the consultation process that we should also add the ten thousand dollar one year in prison for false information to this one as well. Not currently in the law, but may well be a committed change, committed stage amendment that is is to be made when we get to that point. Minister spoke well about information and information sharing and collaboration. So we are minded that the information that we are going to request through the prescribed pieces in the Immigration Cayman Protection Act will be used for decision making and for enforcement and and those legitimate reasons. If, for example, we wanted to share, if we were requested to share information on students who are studying for a particular industry. So I want to start up my own AI company. I'm looking for students who are doing their first degree or master's in AI. I want the government to share that information with me. We would not be able to share that information with a third party unless we get a disclosure from the student. But we could use that information internally to make decisions on behalf of the student. So we're, the the changes are in keeping with data protection, but allows us to be able to make decisions as it relates to enforcement action and and other decisions around work permit grants and and so on. The point three on there is information sharing around linking scholarship applicants. And we were informed and reminded at an earlier stakeholder group this week that let's not forget those Caymanian parents who are parents of Caymanian children who are funding, are self funding their children so they're not in the scholarship database. But are are students who are looking forward to coming back to the Cayman Islands and joining the workforce. So the opportunities for them to have internships, apprenticeships and work opportunities, we see as one that can be elevated by by sharing the work database. And I would quickly thank the Chamber and the H R Society for stepping forward and joining with the government and coming together on a national workforce committee, one of which first goals is to ensure that all of the students who are currently studying, either locally or abroad, have opportunities for internships first off during their school breaks as early as those coming up at the end of this year and into next summer and going forward with a proper workforce planning and long term view of what we can do in relation to industries and policy could then be informed by this data. Not only data for what students are studying, but data in relation to where industries are expecting labor demands to grow so that we can shape policies around scholarship grants and and so on. Under section fifty three are a number of exemptions that are granted to individuals or are exempted from individuals. This exempts individuals from needing a work permit to work or indeed, in some cases, exempting them from work permit requirements. Current little law requires those to be prescribed in regulations. So you would see some of those now if you go on the legislation.gov.ky website on the immigration, you see a number of exemptions who are listed out. There are some exemptions that if we were to list the details would breach data protection for some Caymanian families and other persons who have gotten this facility and have their details on view. So this provision allows for cabinet to attach requirements to exemptions that are done by cabinet in relation to work with their term limit exemptions and for the decision on the details on that decision to not be published. I'd hasten to add that the cabinet minutes are published. So the fact that cabinet made a decision is public knowledge, but the details of that decision would not be published in those instances where it would be harmful to a Caymanian family in that regard. The public sector term limits are another section of the current section fifty three of the Immigration Transition Law, and that portion is being amended to ensure that term limits now apply to civil servants, but but work permits are not required for civil servants. There are a few exemptions to this, and it's a bit technical because the Constitution has a few positions that are not considered civil servants. So they're not under the purview of the Deputy Governor and the Public Service Management Act. So are not covered by the provisions that are being made to the Public Service Management Act and the regulations to that act that would introduce term limits to civil servants through that mechanism. These include the persons employed by Department Management Commission, judges and magistrates, and those individuals who are appointed by the governor under her special powers, but are not civil servants and are not bound by P S M A. So there's a bit of of legal housekeeping to ensure that we would not require a judge to have a work permit once they're appointed by by the judge, by by the by the governor. Specialist caregiver and commercial farmhand certificates. So currently in law, individuals who qualify for a specialist caregiver certificate, if they satisfy the requirements of that, they are granted the specialist caregiver certificate, and that certificate is good for five years. This allows them to bypass the the term limit prescriptions. And at the end of the five years or before the five years, if the if the terms are still in place, we can, they can apply for a new certificate, which would be granted for an additional five years. Currently, there is no end to that process. We are seeking to introduce a maximum of two of those certificates, so an additional ten years and or maxing the certificates to age sixty five for the caregiver. And that is based on the extreme difficulty that folks have of acquiring health insurance and so on once they get past the age of sixty five. We've also received directions to include a similar certificate for farmhands of commercial agricultural producers that would allow their skilled expert farm workers to be able to apply for a five year certificate to work for that said company for a five year period, renewable for a subsequent five year period if all things are still in place for them to qualify. And again, that marks it out at sixty five or at ten years. So these two facilities would allow individuals to stay for, under the current term limit, a maximum of nineteen years before they would then hit a hard limit of having to 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 take a break. Fines and fees. We talked a bit about some of the fines that are being introduced in relation to false information and so on, and a few more that may come by way of committed stages. But there are also some prescripts in there. Ms. Acting Director, is it safe to say that the custom work permit fee listing is almost the same length as the prescribed fees in the regulation? So we have all sorts of nuances because we have a lot of small and medium business where a work permit might be for a and this is just an example, not calling out anyone, a janitor who may also be doing some bookkeeping as well. So it's a bookkeeper slash janitor. I've seen some for nurse slash security guard. And these all take a person to review within the department of work and come up with an appropriate fee to charge. So the the change that we're making is that work permit applications will be tied to the codes in the fee guide, which are in the regulation, the prescribed codes. If a fee is not in there, we will attach you to the closest fee with your agreement, or we will go back and through a formal process, amend the fees and and publish those, and then you can apply on that that particular one. I'll hasten to say that there is a bit of work that has been started previously that we are going to restart to revamp the entire fee structure. that we are going to restart to revamp the entire fee structure, align it more with a Kimanean version of the ISCO codes. So for those of you who are doing your own clearance of goods online now, using CBC Online Systems, one of the things that you have to do is find your tariff code. The tariff code is an international code that is the same for a can of beans in Kemen as it's a can of beans in the US. What we're proposing is that outside of some local bits, we will be adopting a sort of standard approach to job codes going forward. But in the meantime, we're going to be using the prescriptive version of any amendments in order to change that going forward. Where do we go next? The bill is out for public consultation. The email address for feedback is here. That email address is immigrationconsultation.gov.ky. The inbox has been quite robust. Ms. Rollin is smiling here. She's one of the persons that monitor that. We are responding to those queries that come in. And because of those queries, we're also publishing on the website, gov.ky/labour/frequently-asked-questions sheet. So I would advise you to check that sheet first. If your specific question is not on there, then fire off a question to us in relation to the bill, and we will take those forward. We're not only getting questions, we're getting suggestions for recommendations. The bill is, we'll complete the twenty-eight day public consultation process as is required by the Constitution on the fourteenth of November. And it is the view of the minister that the bill is expected to be debated in the November sitting of Parliament once that consultation period is completed. As it relates to the introduction of the precepts in the bill, there are a number of transitional provisions. And I'll take the opportunity to say that facilities such as permanent residency, which have been granted under the existing law, will continue to fly under this existing law. Applications made that are within the timeframes for that applications would be considered under the existing law and not the amended law. The bill will come into force by way of commencement orders, which allows the government, the Cabinet, to stagger the implementation. We know, for example, that the DG has said publicly that the civil service term limit starts on the first of January. So it's our expectation that that amendment to fifty-three, section fifty-three of the existing law that would allow that to happen would need to be rolled out in that format. But some of the other bits would then be time to transition, to allow for transition to happen without undue issues and to not cause the immigration attorneys to get extra funding from us by losing challenges in the court because we didn't follow the laws of natural justice and so on. So once approved in legislation, the effects, the changes would come in and are sented by the governor and so on, gazetted. The changes would come in based on commencement orders. Changes to the legislation are not retroactive and do not apply for any facilities already approved. So the carve-out for that would be work permit facilities would come to their natural end, in which case then the new law would apply to that. Persons who have permanent residency that doesn't have a end date would continue to maintain that. But individuals who would apply for any of those facilities after the law comes into force would be that. Similarly, individuals who are already married, and depending on where you got, when you got married, some of the previous versions of the law actually apply. So when you look through the existing immigration legislation, if you're applying for the right to be Kimanean through marriage, there are categories of dates that you have to fall into. The commencement date for this particular section, but then also fall into one of those dates in relation to that. And if your marriage occurs before that, it's considered under the old law. If it happens after that date, then it's under the new law. Next steps as a ministry. Minister Miles did speak about that. We are having regular meetings. I've said to folks that we have met more often with our colleagues in the Ministry of Education within the last five months than we have within the last year as it relates to common ground on scholarships, training and development, work permit related issues and data around what industries are looking for, what labour and what expertise down the road. Work is also, W O R K, not W O R C. Work is also happening with our sister agencies as well in relation to Department of Labour and Pensions. As Minister said, we are also working on amendments to those pieces of regulation, and those are being done in tandem with the changes that are proposed for this current round of immigration and the following sets of changes as well. And also working very closely with Department of Commerce and Investment in relation to trade and business licenses and so on. And our friends over at the Health Insurance Commission and the RCIPS. And of course, we can't forget our colleagues over at CBC as it relates to persons who are in country or want to come into country. So this is, again, sort of sharing of information as it relates to enforcement action, more joint operations and a stronger immigration system as a result. We know that we can't do all that we need to do without either making it smarter and easier, not only for you but for us as well, or we have to add massive amounts of staff, and we don't have the funding to do that. So we'll continue to invest in technology and systems and ensure that we can deliver on an efficient system for all of our services that we offer. We're continuing with stakeholder engagement. The photo that is on the screen is that one. Is from our Department of Labour and Pensions. Folks who had a how to get to know or get to know what the labour law has in terms of responsibilities and protections and so on. And I can say that those types of engagements will continue. And we've already been given our marching orders that those types of engagements need to be broadcast. It may not be a full Department of Comms broadcast, but we would likely put that on the department or the ministry's social media, Facebook pages and so on. So that brings us to question and answer. Mr. Moderator, you got some marching orders for folks?
I do have some questions, but before I get to the questions, I'll be taking the social media questions first. Remember, there is a two-question limit, so please be mindful that there may be others who may have questions. But Mr. Chief Officer, at the beginning of your address, you mentioned a court case earlier. I wasn't sure if there was a particular point you wanted to make more on that. I think the case you're referring to is Rex versus Tapa. He was sentenced today. He received three months for several offences, which included fraudulent work permits, as well as having cropped images of workforce opportunity and residency employees' signatures to commit the felonies. So I wasn't sure if there was something else you wanted to make. On that note, I'd give you that opportunity now before we go to questions.
That's exactly what I was looking for, and I was hoping it was going to be more than three months.
Well, for those of you interested in following that story, please visit radiokman.gov.ky for the latest updates on court proceedings. Also, before we get into questions and answers, I want to take this opportunity just to recognize some members of Parliament who've joined us since we began. I see the Deputy Leader of the Opposition, the Honourable Kenneth Bryan. Thank you so much for joining, as well as his colleague, the member for Red Bay, Mr. Roy Tatum. I'd just like to put out there that as the Member of Parliament for Red Bay, if he missed this meeting, I would have had something to say. So good to see you out. We do have two questions from Facebook and one from YouTube. I'll start with the question from YouTube. Mr. Minister and Chief Officer, I think it was related to the work permit changes. The question was, do dependents have to remain for two years as well with an employer before they can switch? Or is that only applicable to the person applying for the work permit change? I hope I got that question right.
So, and the experts who are sitting there from the Department of Work can correct me, but dependents are attached to a particular work permit. That variation to add a dependent, if they're not added at the time the application is granted, is done by the employer, so the employer would apply for the variation. So if the employee ends that certificate, the dependent status also ends because it's a part of that facility. So yes, they would in fact be subject to that work permit facility because the dependents are attached to that work permit facility.
Thank you. Just reminding our viewers, those watching online, if you do have questions, please send your questions through. There are ministry officials monitoring YouTube and Facebook, and we'd be happy to take your questions. Over on Facebook, someone asks, if you get PR before the bill passes, can you still get naturalised within a year?
Yeah, so the PRs that have been granted and that are currently being granted are without an end date, which allows that individual to apply for naturalisation within one year of getting that facility. They're effectively free of immigration controls when they get that PR grant and then can apply for naturalisation. There are other individuals who can apply as a dependent or a PR holder as well. Those applications they've done before the bill would also proceed under the existing legislation.
I'll take one more question from Facebook before we go to the public present in the Mary Miller Hall. The question from Facebook reads, is it legal for foreigners who take the PR immigration test to sell test answers? Part two to the question is, is there any legislation to address this behaviour if it is not legal or frowned upon?
Excellent question. First off, I will say that the images, at least the ones that I've seen on social media, are not those of the official test. The official test is made up of a bank of questions, and the tests are randomly generated. But the individual who posted that also posted their number, and we've been in contact with them.
I'll hold a comment till after the end. Feel like I'm going to get in trouble, and I don't want my permit to be in trouble. I'll now head to Mr. Denny Warren, who is in the audience, for his question.
Good evening. So many issues, so little time. Has there been a regulatory impact assessment done regarding this bill? And is that available to the public?
Can you expand on what you mean by?
Like where you sit down and you assess each of the provisions of the bill, and you give information about what you expect to achieve by it, so that we don't end up in a situation of unintended consequences? Meaning properly consider these issues?
Yeah, so as part of the process to get this bill forward, and Pete Bryan is in the room, he probably has three or four versions of this bill from his time when he was in office, because that's how long we've been working on this. The approach that we took was, one, we got directions from the boards as to issues that they were encountering and areas of exploitation that they wanted to have fixed. We got feedback from the Immigration Appeals Tribunal, who reviews the decisions of the board. And they gave us a list of fixes as well. We also got feedback from the Attorney General's Chambers. And you might not believe it, but we also got feedback from some immigration officers that said, you know, put me out of business, but here are some of the holes that you need to fix with the legislation as well. But I don't want to be political, but I'll leave that to the minister. But the slides that show the growth of PR and Kimanean status and the issues that we've had around work permits of convenience and so on, those are the significant changes in the bill. The other ones are housekeeping in nature, legal tweaking that have required changes. So yeah, we're keenly aware, and Minister, I think, I'm not sure that you were here when he started, but the preamble laid out the political case for change. So that is definitely in the public domain in relation to other changes. You know, we take those all as delivering on the policy mandate.
Yeah, I mean, we've also met with, I don't know, probably seventy companies. Every sector was represented. We had at least, we're now in our seventh focus group that have represented every single sector in the Kemen Islands. We wanted to stress that with as many attorneys that we wanted, that, you know, that we needed to. Accountants, HR managers. We went through just about everything, but if you're asking for a report, I don't have that report. What I have is people that are going to be doing this on a regular basis, and we wanted to ensure that it was thoughtful, that if we needed to change or make amendments to anything, we've accepted some concessions and we've pushed through it. But it has been stress-tested, certainly over the last six months that I've been in government.
Does clause eighty-three A seven allow for those who are employed by government, non-Kimaneans who are applied by government, to essentially go on to get Kimanean status?
So if you're saying if an employee of the government manages to qualify for permanent residency, if they can go and get Kimanean status?
Are they exempted from this legislation that would allow them to continue on to, without having to comply with this, the principal law as would be amended by these proposals?
Yeah, so the DG debated this in the Parliament when the Parliament first met and passed a piece of legislation in relation to amendments to the Personal Management Act. The details of that will come when the regulations are published and along with that. But the understanding is that persons within the government now are able to qualify for PR. And if they satisfy the fifteen-year residency, can go on to right to be Kimanean. And there's nothing that we have drafted here that would prevent that from happening.
So they would be obligated to satisfy the obligations of the law as would be amended by these provisions, not the existing principle law?
Yeah, so the new provisions would only apply to a civil servant who acquires PR after these new provisions come into play. If a civil servant already has PR, then they would be able to apply for the right to be Kimanean at year fifteen, like anybody else who currently has PR. If they acquire PR after the law comes into effect, then they can apply at year twenty, when everybody else applies, and all the other criteria would apply to them.
Thank you for that. I wish I had more time, but I think the regulations should be published because of, for people to consider what they will say because so much of immigration law is about the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Warren. I'm going to go to a question from social media. As I see our next in-person question is getting ready. The question is from YouTube, and it says, what will happen to the investment by status? Very open-ended question. I am trusting that the Chief Officer will be able to lend some insight.
Thanks. I think I know what the question speaks to. So I'll first off say that there is no direct route to status by investment. So you can't invest and go straight into right to be Kimanean. But there are a number of PR facilities that have a pathway to naturalisation and therefore a pathway to Kimanean status. of PR facilities that have a pathway to naturalization and therefore a pathway to Kamanian status. What will happen to them? The mandate that we have is to, so I'll first say that the amounts of those investments were set some 10, maybe 15 years ago and haven't been increased since. So the mandate that we have is to significantly adjust those numbers upwards to better reflect what high net worth actually means now.
Thank you. And I'm going to now head over to Deputy Leader of the Opposition, the Honorable Kenneth Bryan, who has a question in hall.
Thank you, Jevi. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, panel minister. I just want to say thank you so much for having this public meeting. It's definitely beneficial to us all to understand in the way forward in respect to immigration reform. I'm going to use my two questions. First one is, can you say what the difference is with these proposals and the white paper that was presented before? You referred the fact that we were a part of much of what was there. Can you tell me what differences between the two?
I have personally lost track of the changes because there've been so many versions of this. But I think Minister Miles has been on record to say he came and found legislation that was quite advanced and we've tweaked it and brought it forward. So if you're looking for political kudos, I can leave him to answer that, but the short answer is, I would say, high 90% of this is stuff that was already drafted, that was waiting on the mandate to publish and bring forward.
So it was the white paper from the last administration, majority of it, 90% of it?
The...
Okay, all right, sorry. I don't want it to get political, but I think I got my answer.
So the white paper itself was a summary of the bill and didn't contain the details. So it wasn't a consultation draft of a bill. So all of the details that are in here were not in that. We do have a record of what changes we've made and we could provide that when we meet with you on Friday for your close session meeting on the bill. So if you leave it alone, I can give you that.
I still got my record, so I'll find it. Don't worry. Thank you so much for the answer. I do appreciate it. Didn't mean to be political, I just wanted to say that this didn't just all happen right away. The second question is, in respect to the civil servants, we've made some changes that they will be equal to that to public sector in respect to applications to rights to be Kamanian or RERC, or permanent residency. But there's some other legislation that were giving them special provisions or protected them from being able to do certain applications because they were exempt from work permit and rollover policies. For example, if a non-Kamanian civil servant was applying for PR and wasn't approved, they have to wait nine years before they can apply for it again. Unlike in the public sector, if you apply and you're not a part of government and you are refused, you can apply for it again within one year. And there's a difference because civil servants were treated differently under the protections and not being exposed. So now that we have put them on equal powering to the rest of public sector, will those other pieces of legislation also be equal to that of public sector? Like for instance, the right to be able to apply after a year or year and a half?
I was hoping to not have to say this tonight, but that piece of work is being done under the PSMA and we're not responsible for that. I don't know what their drafting instructions are in relation to the limitations that are in there. Suffice to say that if they are applying, reapplying aside, if they're applying through this current legislation or the upcoming legislation, they have to meet all the same requirements, i.e. time and country and so on. What they have the benefit now of is that term limits don't apply and they don't require work permits because their government contract stands in that space.
Okay. And thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. While anyone else who has a question in hall makes their way to the microphone, we do have some more questions online. I think that this next question may be somewhat related to question seven on the Frequently Answered Questions document, which can be found at publicconsultation.gov.ky. But the question reads, will these laws be enacted retroactively?
So yeah, I think they're asking the same question multiple ways. No. So the law does not apply for anyone who has a current facility. So if you have PR and you're currently on track for a 15-year application for right to be Kamanian, you'll continue under that timeline. If you are married to Kamanian and already married and you're on your way to year seven where you can apply for the right to be Kamanian, you can still go ahead and make that application and it will be considered under the existing legislation. The difference that would be would be the annual declarations. Yeah, those kick in for everybody once the law kicks in.
Thank you.
And that doesn't apply to work permit stuff as well.
Understood. Just having a look around to see if anyone made their way to the microphone. If not, I'll head back to social media. We have a question from YouTube. It reads, what if you were on part-time employment? Do you still have to leave the island assuming for rollover?
So read that again for me, please. I was going to ask you to explain, but it's not your question, so.
What if you were on part-time employment? Do you still have to leave the island assuming for rollover?
If you have a work license, you have a work permit, that starts your clock ticking. Whether or not you're working 20 hours or 60 hours, you have a work permit that has a clock ticking towards your term limit. So yeah, whether or not you're part-time or not, it doesn't matter. If you have a certificate, a permit, that starts the clock and you would hit the term limit at that point.
Thank you. I see we have a member of the public with a question. Ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. In the beginning of the presentation, there was mention of the number of status grants by marriage. You didn't mention perhaps an approximation of the percentage of those that are deemed to be marriage of convenience, right? So what, but you did mention there is some investigation into approximate 200 cases. What are the specific criteria that you use to determine that marriage is of convenience? That's the first question. And then the second question, I guess do that first and maybe do a follow-up.
Okay. So I'm not going to give away any secrets as to what we're looking for to see if a marriage of convenience, because some folks who are listening may actually be in that situation. But what I can say, that the provisions for refusal and for revocation of a facility don't have to get to the same bar of a criminal conviction. Therefore, the board can make a decision based on a number of pieces of evidence that have been provided, that have evidence that the individuals are, in some cases, it's fairly overt, but in others, it would have to be a reasoned decision. I would hasten to add as well that revocations have an appeals process, they can appeal that to the Immigration Appeals Tribunal. And if they don't like that answer, they can also judicial review that. And there's many attorneys who are making a good living going through that process. But the prescripts are that that evidence is presented. The way that the revocations work, it's not an automatic process where the board acts without any interaction. They would actually write to the individual to say, we're mindful to revoke based on these things, please give us your reasoning why we shouldn't take that decision. And that is taken into consideration before a decision is made. If we don't do that, then we go off to court and they overturn the decision. So I hope that helps to paint the picture of what that process is.
Okay. So then my follow-up connects to that. So in your process then, the objective to do that is to fulfill the definition of intact, okay? However you've decided to define that internally. So it has to be intact. Okay? So in order to do that, right, so there is a series of paperwork of application that's completed by the couple, right? Comes through the foreigner, but then obviously the Kamanian partner is part of that application process. So in the proposed reforms, what I hear is, okay, so there's an extension of time to submit that package of paperwork for application for review, because the assumption is perhaps waiting longer would reduce the incidence of marriage of convenience, right? So is there also any other plans to consider other efforts that might address that in addition to just paperwork? And I say that because papers are just papers, they're not people, right? So when that package of that application goes forward, you know, there is an opportunity to conduct interviews with the person making the application, to understand who they are, where they come from, why they're here, learning about their personality as well as their Kamanian partner. Who are they? Where they work? Where they live? Interviews with the people who are providing references. And in my personal experience, you know, not one phone call, not one interview, not one home visit, not one following up with an employer, there wasn't any process to that. And perhaps there's some opportunity in this reform to consider efforts that address that that could help you accomplish one of your core goals is to preserve local culture, right? Is that you want those people to be people who want to be here and committed to the community, right?
So a brilliant question. Relying on Raul here to jog my memory, but we do have a set of regulations that will help strengthen the current provisions within immigration law as it relates to marriage officers and what requirements we put on them as they go through their pre-marriage counseling and other things, reporting requirements and so on. And I do know that we've had a draft marriage law in the wings for quite some time now. That was put forward for the new government's consideration. Minister, I'm not sure if Cabinet's made a decision on that. It's not for our ministry. But as it relates to the requirements that we can enforce through immigration law on marriage officers, we're doing that piece of work as well. So that wouldn't be detailed in this. We're literally asking for Cabinet's approval to go do some drafting on that, but it is coming and brilliant question for sure.
Thanks for that. Thanks for that question. Wes is right. We are taking lead on all of it because marriage has to start from the inception as well. It can't be transactional and that's what we've seen here. And I mean, I don't want to get into, you know, the things that exactly what Wes talked about, keeping some of this, how we determine confidential. I don't want to get into the specifics of it. But we've also looked at the marriage law on how marriage, from pastors to ministers and other marriage officers, conduct those investigations. And we've made significant progress in that and Cabinet will be bringing that forward as well because we believe that our immigration law is only as strong as all of the other laws that surround it. So I started looking at all of it because I wanted to understand how we can make all of it stronger. We know that there are going to be some bad actors in all of this. I'm not here to investigate every person's marriage or, you know, whether someone loves each other or not. But we also have a lot of very smart marriage officers that see a lot of this stuff come in and we need to support them better. And that's what we're doing. We revise in forms that they can report these incidences because currently there's not a lot. There's not a lot of, not just legislation, but there's not a lot of opportunities to report this stuff. And we have a lot of this stuff. Another thing that marriage officers are going to be able to do is report when people are shopping around for marriage officers, because they may come to a marriage officer and that person knows it's a sham marriage, but then they go to another marriage officer and all of a sudden, they now find an officer that will allow that. They'll be able to post those, put those reports online and those marriage officers should be able to go online to see if there's a report that was filed on that particular couple. All of these things do not exist right now and we have to use technology to ensure that all of these things are now not just enforced, but they're reported properly and we can now act on a lot of it. So great question.
So before we get to data protection, people all up in arms, the reporting is on a secure site for marriage officers, so it's not a publicly available website.
Good caveat. You hear a lot of questions about it. I want to get to a few questions on social media. Sir, I'll come to you in just a short moment. Question from Facebook, why is it that the English test is being waived for only certain companies? Now, they didn't say it, but I posed the question.
I don't know if it's being waived. We've been requested by a number of companies to waive it. I said no, because I don't believe that anyone in our country should have that exemption. We are an English-speaking country and if you can't speak English, you shouldn't be allowed in our country to work in a work permit. So I don't know what have happened before my time. I know what I'm being asked to do now and we have said no. There's several construction companies that have contacted work to have this stuff waived because they have specialist people coming in. If they can't pass that test, that's at least the limited thing that they should be able to do. We're not waiving anything else. So I just want to make sure that everyone is clear on that. I also want to make sure that people also have an understanding about the exemptions that Wes just, Wes talked about. When somebody applies for, you know, have gone through a number of different facilities on their work permit and there's no more to get, they cannot renew their work permit more, people have applied in the past to have their work permits exempted based on a number of things. I, you know, like we've had a number of people from the construction arena that have said, well, I need this employee. Well, employee isn't a specialist. So in my last six months, I think we may have proved maybe one out of, I don't know, 50 or however much that we've gotten, because I don't believe that those jobs should be protected. Those jobs are, should be Kamanian, filled and prioritized and we need to push that a lot more. So we've balanced the scale on a lot of this, including supporting our immigration department rather than overriding the things that they're doing, which is, 90% of it is great work.
Thank you. Another question on social media and then we're coming to you, sir. Question from YouTube, speaking specifically to the compliance noted in the ministry's mission, how are we addressing those who do not abide by the requirements for pension and health contributions?
So that's an interesting one. The, and you follow the courts, Jevi, so you would know that there's a number of employers who have been before the summary court within the last few weeks on pension-related bits. Some of those cases are as old as two or three years since they've offended. The pension reform that Minister spoke about earlier is one of the things that we wanted to significantly work around, streamline in that process and introducing some other means of dealing with those offenders. The Health Insurance Commission is the one that has the oversight for those bits. What I can say from a ministry level, we are in discussion with all of those agencies, DCI as well, in relation to sort of repeat employers who are individuals who are able to get multiple trade and business licenses. And that's a piece of work that I know Minister Miles is championing with the caucus colleagues in relation to a way forward to make the compliance bit more well-rounded and not so much focused solely on immigration. Minister?
Yeah. Part of enforcement for the coalition government is sharing information. What has been unfortunate, and again, I'm not saying it's by anybody's fault, but what has been unfortunate is that within government, we've created lots of either embargoes on each other or silos. Our responsibility now is to communicate and to act. That's what I'm asking and all of my colleagues have contributed to us acting better when it comes to sharing of information and putting in good policy. We cannot, we cannot reform immigration in a bubble anymore. We cannot reform immigration because... We cannot reform immigration because we don't like an individual or a person or a company or a particular sector. We have to ensure that reforms are thoughtful and we're not constantly being taken to court and sued because we've done something wrong. So a lot of what I'm doing now is tearing down the silos and having organizations share information. We really never even had a database that everybody contributed to and that's an investment, you know, based on the technology that Wes showed you at the end of where we're going. We all have to start to share information to ensure that people have a clear understanding that the government is actually talking to each other, that departments are actually collaborating, that we're enforcing our laws. I've made it clear over the last six months, I'm not bringing in any law unless we can enforce the law. If we can't enforce the law, what's the point? Right? What is the point? So our responsibility is to now move the laws closer that our immigration department has been heavily involved in this, you know, and we've communicated up and down the food chain. In addition to that, it's to, is, is to make sure that labor and pension is part of the process. So we're not, we're not overriding some of the things that they are doing. So everything that we've been doing, and I'm not saying it's 100% accurate because nothing is, but I can tell you it is darn near close that a lot of folks have come forward and are now ready to be able to sit at the table and share information so we can create the policy and laws that we need because going forward, we have to be able to enforce it with the current people that we have. The government doesn't have an endless pit of money anymore, unfortunately. We've spent it. So we have to do with what we have. I'm not giving immigration more staff. We have to do with what we have. So therefore, part of this process as well is training up people, holding ourselves accountable. And as I've said to the 80 employers that I've met with over the last six months, when we don't get it right, I am the first one in the line to say, we're not getting this right. We apologize and let's make it work better. That's what I believe that this should be, how, how we should move this forward. Premier agrees with this approach because our government, we're not going to get all of it right, but we certainly need to make it better when, when we don't get it right.
Thank you. I'm now going to head to in hall for our next question.
Hello. I've got two questions. The first one, I think in the last-
If you can just come closer to the microphone.
Sorry. In about the, in the last seven years or eight years, I think, the Grand Court and the Court of Appeal have both said that the decisions of the Immigration Department can be seen to be arbitrary and opaque because of the lack of policies. Is there any plans on publishing any policies anytime soon?
Yes, absolutely.
Good question.
We are relenting to the FOIs and so on. So there's a number of policies that are being published. I think the first one up is the, what's the ones with the, the folks who have offended? The high, the risk register? So in the, companies who have, who have offended, found to be in breach of the immigration, legislation been fined or otherwise are placed in a risk register. There's a policy around that. That policy, if it's not already published, will soon be published and-
Actually, sorry to interrupt you. I did an FOI about that policy three weeks ago. It hasn't been provided to me.
We're going to publish it. I know you asked for it. And we've asked for resources to in-house, specific expertise to help us draft policies that would stand up to attorneys such as those that would FOI, those types of documents.
The second question I have is that you're amending section 64, which is the section which permits employers, sorry, expatriates to change employers during the currency of a work permit.
Yes.
Effectively, what it appears to me that you're doing is that you can't do, sorry, if you resign within the first two years, you can't change unless there's some prime circumstances which you'll tell us about in due course.
Yeah.
However, if you're sacked within those two years, you can.
Yes. So, so we have, we have flagged the wording, which actually starts with the holder of, of a work permit and realize that if it was not what was intended, so the drafting has to be amended to reflect that it's within your first two years in country, not whether or not you actually hold a work permit or not. So you, you can't not show up to work and be sacked and then jump ship because you're no longer the holder of a work permit. So we've, we've, we've figured that out and that's a committed stage amendment.
Brilliant. Great. Thank you.
I also, just before you leave, I, I just want to comment and let you also know that we've recognized that immigration don't have formal politists, policies. We are doing formal policies. We are going to be ensuring that our laws and our policies coincide. So we're paying for all of that because the goal for us is, and this is part of getting immigration to where it's efficient, to where everyone sings from the same hymn book, that whoever you call within immigration or within the ministry, we can either pull the regulation, the, the law or the policy. So all of that's going to be crafted and I know that a, a number of attorneys have been asking for this for a long time. I've been, I, the moment that I got in, I spoke to a lot of attorneys and they said, you know, we really need to see policies going forward because it seems very haphazard. We are going to, we're going to be moving this forward. So I appreciate, because I know you're one of the attorneys that I spoke with and I know your frustration is, is that very little has been consistent. So we're listening to what the public is telling us. The difference is, is that we're acting. I don't have time to play politics with a lot of it or any of it. We have to get the job done and this has to be done within two years because we have to start to look at what changes we need to make after that. So thank you for all of the, your contribution over the last couple of months of chatting with me as well.
Thank you.
I want to move on to our next question and then after you, ma'am, we're going to go back to social media questions. Only in small part because I want to see Jordan stand up just a little bit longer. But we'll, we'll get to some more social media questions which I see are banking up on the phone, but ma'am, over to you. And while the mic is being set up, I just want to remind the public that after, there are some light refreshments that we do encourage you to partake. Of course, cannot be a Caymanian meeting without food and so that will be happening right after. But ma'am, over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Two quick questions, basically feedback. Michael, do you know what the AAT was established? When and who did that?
I do not, but I don't know if, I don't know if any of my, Wes, do you know when it was established?
I can't remember.
I don't know, but I can only say to you, over the last six months, it's been phenomenal experience in meeting with the AAT on a regular basis. I'm probably one of the few ministers, if any, who've met with the AAT because they've helped us draft a number of different proposals that's in the current law and strengthen our point system. So it's been a privilege to actually work with that one organization or that one tribunal.
Minister, perhaps for the benefit of the public, you or the questioner could probably clarify-
The Immigration Appeals Tribunal. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're looking at the young woman that established and implemented the Immigration Appeals Tribunal along with the late Donovan E. Banks. I also was the secretary for five and a half years, even when I transferred to the Ministry of Education. They had to use me for two years until Kim Bullins could come and take over from me. One of my members are here. Her name is Mrs. Betty Barrow. That was one of my members and Ms. Twyla Escalante was her chairman. And that happened in 2000 and I did it for 2005, late 2005 after the hurricane. One of the things that we wanted to do was to make sure that everybody coming in, if a husband got Cayman status and they wanted to have a wife and children after 18 and they wanted to apply, we wanted to make sure that we made revenue from that. As you know, the AIA, I AAT, I started off charging $100. I think it's now up to 15, it may be more. It has contributed to a lot of revenue that we needed to make sure that the government can run, but I did that. Number two, Michael, you said you weren't given staff or a lot more staff. You need a lot more enforcement staff. There's a lot of companies that will not, will not help you. There's a lot of companies that are not going to help you and want to see these changes. And your staff, the little bit that you do have in enforcement, cannot handle the quantity of people and companies that we have here. And those fines don't need to be 1,000, they need to be 100,000 for breaking laws. Pension, also all of the nasty and verbal things that they're doing to many of the Caymanian staff. Michael, it goes hand in hand. If you're not going to treat your staff well, you're not going to have good results. I have been in law firms where I have seen British lawyers cursing their staff, the F-word. Where the F is this? Where the F is that? What are we doing? This is common assault. When I worked in the judicial department, I charged you for that. There were many police officers and including people from immigration like Mr. Franz Madison, who is now our deputy governor, and many more in decency, insulting the decency of women, but it isn't hand in hand. So you need enforcement out there to go through many of these companies, to see the laws that they're breaking and to make sure that they're going to pay and comply. That's my three. Take care and-
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Minister, I don't know if you wanted to respond to that. I know she referenced you much. Are you good?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to move on to some more social media questions and then we'll come to Mr. Rivers. Question from YouTube. Was it the intended commencement? What is the intended commencement date of the amendment? I know that it will be discussed at the next parliamentary sitting in November, but it's asking, what the intended commencement date for the amendment?
So I, I spoke about this a little earlier, so that person probably tuned in. The, the only one we know, assuming that the legislation passes that will come in at the beginning of the year would be the provisions that introduces tournaments for non-Caymanian civil servants. The other ones would then be based on sufficient time for the public and the department to get ready and so on. So we haven't discussed those with the cabinet yet, but we'll be guided by, by the cabinet in that regard.
Thank you. And on, on a similar point to the commencement of the amendment, this one is about the regulations. Will the regulations be published and will there be time to review and consult on those?
So the, the regulations are a matter for, for the cabinet, it's not a matter for the parliament. I can't speak on behalf of the minister. You can say whether or not there's some intent to, to have those discussed before they come into force, but regulations by, by nature, unless the primary legislation requires them to be done, passed by the parliament, are a matter for the cabinet.
And Minister, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
I agree with what Wes is saying. I mean, our, the regulations are going to be shared. Right now, cabinet is going to be reviewing all regulations and once we approve them, they'll be out for public consultation as well.
Thank you.
But you know, part of that process is probably not until the new year. We have to get the bill across the finish line.
Thank you, Minister. Two more questions and then Mr. Jordan, we're coming to you. Question from Facebook. What consideration has been given to churches as it relates to work permit for pastors or essential staff within churches?
Acting director nonprofits are nil work permit fees, but they still need to satisfy the requirements of the law unless exempted from things like advertising. So I think that is the answer. I can say that we are looking at amendments to the Labor Act that would bring nonprofits and churches into the organizations that have to comply with that because currently they don't have to. So I hope that helps.
I hope so too. I'm sure they will comment on Facebook and let your ministry know.
Yep.
Question from YouTube. When some, when does someone with Caymanian status have to make an annual declaration? Is it just people granted status through marriage or for everyone who holds status? And will this be retroactive?
As proposed in the, the draft bill, it's persons who have the right to be Caymanian through marriage and for the seven years under which that there's a loss provision. So if the marriage ends during that seven years currently, if that marriage falls apart, the person could lose their status through, through marriage. That's the period. So we wouldn't ask them to submit declarations that they're still in an intact marriage after the seven years, but they would do it up to seven years.
Thank you. Mister, Minister, did you want to add anything? You're good. Mr. Rivers, over to you.
Good night, Minister. Good night to you and your panel, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the prolonged suspense. Good night to everyone inside the audience here and to the wider Cayman community. I'll use my first question here and I'll save my second one for potentially later on. But in keeping with the theme of the Caymanian Protection Act, has your ministry or the wider government as a whole given strong consideration to putting provisional carve-outs in, in the workforce for Caymanians only? And I think it's a safe enough question to ask this, particularly in tourism, with that being a homegrown product.
You know what I mean? I, great question, Jordan. Every job in the Cayman Islands is for Caymanians. Every single job. The only reason why we have folks coming in for those particular jobs is when we don't have the skillset, the experience or the qualifications. If we start to make specific carve-outs for specific jobs and we're saying that the majority of the jobs are in our jobs, when all of them are. So my responsibility, when it comes to the human capital development aspect of really where I believe our ministry needs to get to, is to ensure that we have a proper plan so our young people know where those, where those career pathways are or where the money is that they want to, to actually receive for their careers. We currently don't have that. I don't want to start to get into the specifics. I want to start to get young people and, and our people in general to start to understand that tourism doesn't mean making a bed, serving drinks. Tourism also means the general manager. Tourism means the director. Tourism means the manager. We consistently talk about tourism as if it's the only thing that we can get is the bellhop and we don't ask the pain. And this is one of the areas that I've challenged the Cayman's Tourism Association to do better on. We cannot track Caymanians to this if we're only going to talk about the glass ceiling of it. I visited five hotels, Minister Ruddy and I visited five of the top hotels on island over the last six months. No Caymanian general managers. The majority of staff in their upper echelon are from the expatriate community. So I am asking, we're giving you concessions, we're giving you discounts on work permits, but there's no succession planning. How do we get our people into that industry? We run it. We owned it. And now I'm being told that Caymanians don't want to actually work in that industry. So we have to get back to saying, all of the industries are ours. We allow guest workers to come in where we don't have the expertise. So it's why we're, why this collaboration with the Cayman, with, with, with education is critical. If I don't know and Wes don't know and Jeremy doesn't know, who is actually away on scholarship? So we can start to prepare for them, we're always going to be behind the eight ball. And I'm not doing that for four years. We have to know every young person, whether they're, whether it's, whether they're in a scholarship from the government or from the private sector, or whether it's a child that their parents are supporting them. I've asked for everyone, submit the names so I can prepare better for them and hold the private and public sector responsible. Because this is not just about holding the private sector responsible. This is about holding government responsible as well. We can't have jobs going to the expatriate community when we have hundreds, and, and I can tell you, my last county was over 1,800 Caymanians that are in some sort of tertiary education, training program or some sort of college, whether it's overseas or on island. And yet we are saying that we are short of labor for Caymanians? We're not. Every industry is ours and I want to make sure that organizations understand this. We are allowing you to operate in our country. It's not a right. It's a privilege. Yeah?
Thank you. Minister, I wish you all the best in your endeavors. I look forward to the next four years with you at the helm of this. I will say, this is from lived experience. Successive governments have pretty much played ball with these individuals and allowed them to do exactly the same things that you're talking about. And until they have a clear understanding that, quite to what you've just said, that it is a privilege to be in this country and you will- and you will have a succession plan in place for Caymanians, I think we're gonna continue to see what we're seeing here now. So I wish you the best in your endeavor to correct that and get Caymanians back on track in leading positions in this country. Thank you.
Over the last, and just over the last six months, we've strengthened our, the business staffing plan, because that's one of the areas that I believe that we had a lot of deficiencies in. We're strengthening it even more. But as I came in, one of the things that we've done differently was we have enhanced people's opportunities to make better decisions. Immigration cannot be ran from the Ministry of Education or the minister. It has to be ran from the knowledge, the experience, the qualifications and the people on the ground. Immigration cannot be ran from me. I have to be able to support the people who are making these decisions. Too often immigration is being run from the ministry or the minister or the premier. We can't run immigration like that anymore. So in just six months, the Business Staffing Plan Board have forced over, I, 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 many, many employers to create jobs or to carve out succession planning, to make donations to, I mean, just the university or college alone have received over seven hundred thousand dollars in scholarships. Now, we're holding people accountable. When people don't comply, I've said to the board, bring them in. Let's understand what their, what, what their business cases are. What are their needs? I want to be fair and equitable across the board. If we know that we need more, more AI professionals and we don't have that as a skillset in our country, I'm not gonna jam up business because we don't have that. But we need to also make sure that there's a Caymanian or Caymanians identified to go into that. Things like real estate. We've consistently said it, or people don't want to go into real estate, which I know is untrue. Why aren't we saying, and, and saying to real estate organizations, here's what, here's what needs to happen? You have to be able to train up Caymanians. No one has taken it on. A lot of it is because people have donated to campaigns. No one owns me. No one owns what, what I have accomplished. My responsibility isn't to the donors. My responsibility is to the forty thousand Caymanians that live and work in our country. Right? This is where we're going. And as I've said, even to the opposition, I'm willing to work across the board with anyone who wants to work in the betterment of our people. Let's put the politics aside. How do we get there? How do I say to a child at Georgetown Primary School, Red Bay Primary School, the Lighthouse School, that you have a future in our country? If we don't start now, we're never gonna get there. And this is why I looked at all the boards and I have said, we can't play politics with this anymore. We have to put competent people on the boards and we have to hold them accountable for doing the job. I've showed you the, the scenario. We have six to five thousand work permits. The boards are processing collectively less than ten thousand between business staffing plans, PR applications, Cayman status, work permits. It's not enough, because we are too busy playing politics with this. So we have to now enhance the boards, make sure that they're doing their job and make sure that our administrators are doing the job collectively. You can't, we can't continue to run two different immigration departments. Another thing that we have to do better at is make sure that when we do something that is not fundamentally correct, that we don't hide behind it. That we can come out and say, you know, something we're not doing is right. We're gonna do this better. The business community will have more respect for us as an organization if we can meet them halfway and say, this is not going to plan. Let's get this better. And that's what we've been doing. In the last just three weeks, I've met with the Cayman Islands Recruitment Association. Never heard of it. I never heard of that association until they reached out to me. I called them, we had a meeting, because I wanted to meet with everyone that want to serve Caymanians. I've met with CETA, I've met with Cayman Finance. I've met with all of the accounting firms. I've met with the legal professionals. Anyone that want to meet with me in the betterment of our people, I am going to meet with. But guess what? You now have to act. Because I'm not gonna sit around the table and just have conversation because you have an agenda. We have to now have a conversation that Caymanians are going to be hired, promoted, trained and moved through your system. Because if it's not that, then this is not gonna work for us anymore. I cannot promise you beyond four years. I'm gonna promise you four years, and then we're gonna pick up after that and, and move on to the next four years. But I can tell you, in four years, we're gonna do a lot of really great things. But the public, this is yours. This is not, immigration reform is not about Michael Miles. Immigration reform is not about Wesley Howell. Immigration reform is now, is, is not about the coalition. Immigration reform is about Cayman Islands, our people, our way of life. My responsibility as a citizen of our country is to protect our way of life. Immigration reform has to be about protecting our borders, protecting our people, protecting our culture. We've only focused just on the money, on how much money we make from it. That's a small part of immigration reform. I'm focused more on the social element of it. Yeah, we can collect a hundred million dollars, but how is that used to preserve our culture, our people, our way of life? So I'm looking at immigration reform very holistically and making sure that people have an opportunity to be a part of it without an agenda. Right? And that's, that, that's what makes this so great, is that people are able to come, here, here. Here's what's scaring me most, we can clarify it. And then let's move on into putting it in place. What I'm not gonna have are organizations coming to the table simply just to procrastinate, to stop, to prevent, because it only protects their particular agenda. We can't have that anymore. So we're moving on from this. Yeah?
Thank you so much, Minister. I am conscious of the time. I know that there are some snacks at the back. I do want to take this opportunity to thank our panel for joining us. I'm also conscious to the persons online that there are some questions that were not answered. But I feel it's only right that I add a little pressure, of course, with the leave of the chief officer, that the ministry, I'm sure, will be able to answer those questions in the Frequently Asked Questions section. Document, again, that document can be found at publicconsultation.gov.ky. Of course, if you have any questions, any further comments, the Ministry of Caymanian Employment and Immigration want to hear from you. And please get those emails in by close of day on the fourteenth of November, twenty twenty-five. To the members of the media joining us here this evening, just to remind you that the ministry will be hosting a media roundtable for this topic. And I'm sure that that is happening, I think, later this week or next week.
Next week.
It's next week. Thank you for that. So of course, reach out to ministry officials and they look forward to having you. For those who are in Cayman Brac, the ministry will be traveling tomorrow to the Brac for their consultation meeting. And that will be taking place at Lehman Scott, Senior Scott, Lehman Scott Senior High School.
Got it right.
Yeah, I got it right. Blame Mrs. Scott. All right. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please enjoy the light refreshments at the end. If you do have personal questions or very specific questions, ministry staff is on, 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 on hand to answer those questions. And of course, we look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you so much.
We'll take one more.
Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Another question? Go right ahead.
Hello? Okay. I just wanted to ask about Section thirty-nine, which is in the current legislation. Will that be in the regulation when this bill comes into force?
Give us.
So Section thirty-nine has to do with dependence of PR holders. So will that be in the regulation for this bill?
Yes. So the, the way that the, the bill works, and this is a, the, the way that the legislative, and which make, which is why we're doing this actually. Because if, if you're not familiar with legislation, the bill is modifying aspects of the existing legislation. So if the bill doesn't mention thirty-nine, it's not touching thirty-nine. So thirty-nine stays as is. And I believe that's right. And we, we don't have an amendment to thirty-nine, so it, it is still there. In some cases, we may, we may add something to the, to the section, and it might be a thirty-nine A, but that's not the case in this one.
Okay. All right. And then the other question that I had, had, it had to do with Caymanians coming back. And the issue that a lot of Caymanians have coming back is that when they apply for jobs, that they're being put in an interim position. And these are individuals that have a sohertz, bachelors and masters. So how are you going to force employers to hire Caymanians who are duly qualified in, in positions that they're underpaying Caymanians to be in?
That's a great question. So here's how we're making the changes to the Jobs Cayman Portal and how it all connects to the Business Staffing Plan and the Business Staffing Plan Board. I have the Business Staffing Plan, along with our ministry and our department, looking now carefully at sharing that, all the data from all of those students. Because currently, w- we are now cleaning up that data from the, from the Ministry of Education. That data, the Business Staffing Plan Board has never received that data. The Business Staffing Plan Board don't know who's overseas. So by the time those students come back, those work permits have already been granted. We need to get that done before, and that's what we're doing now. In addition to that, we also have to start to look beyond to where it's just governed by immigration. We need a suitable workforce development strategy. We need to take it off of paper and we didn't, and, and we have to make it come alive. And that's what I'm working on now with a, a workforce staffing team. Because our goal now is to ensure that all of those students, and you've heard me say, I've counted over eighteen hundred between Cayman and overseas, that I don't know names, I don't know what they're coming back with. So we don't have an accurate labor force review on any of that. So I don't know what they're, who's, who's coming back? Who needs to go into accounting? Who needs to go into HR or who needs to go into law or whatever? We have to now address that. The Business Staffing Plan addresses one small piece of that, but a proper human capital development plan addresses all of it. So we have to know who's coming back and they fit right into that plan. So if Maples, for example, or Walkers or whoever is looking for an HR person, we can say, hey, we have five at UCCI. You don't need to bring in anyone, because you're not gonna get those work permits, because we have five.
But suppose they say, oh, this person don't have the five years of experience to be a HR generalist. How do you justify that?
And a lot of that, a, as well as that, no one has actually looked into what those qualifications are, right? Because no one has ever questioned it. Like I have organizations now coming in, being pulled into the work permit teams. And they have to answer to that. They have to answer, why does that person need five years? Right? Why not? If you have an individual, if, if, if Wesley has five years, but he's an expatriate and I have, I'm a new, I'm a new graduate, my, their responsibility, I'm his successor. And they have to write me, write a succession plan. So organizations are hiring me because I need that training. You're not gonna fast-track him to PR and then I don't get that job. It's the same as the public sector. The public sector has to do it, do, do the exact same thing. So those business staffing plans, we need to actually enforce them. We actually haven't enforced them. So we have to make sure that those things are enforced. But great question.
Thank you so much.
Jevi.
And just to remind.
Mr. Moderator, I have two, two cleanup bits.
Go right ahead.
Before you conclude, I, I got a little note, just to, to give a Cliff Notes directions to folks who are going to follow instructions and go download the bill if they hadn't already done so. And to explain a bit about how the bill works. So the bill is not replacing the existing Immigration Transition Act in its entirety. So that act will still maintain most of its, its sections. The bill would modify certain sections, insert some sections and delete some sections. So what I would recommend is that when you go and download the bill, which I hope you will do, look at pages, well, look at all the pages, but start looking really at the reasons and objects. It goes clause by clause and explains what each clause, clause is seeking to do. Then you actually need to go and find the old bill and the new bill and read the old act and the new bill and read each clause against that bill. If you can't do that, find us in Cayman Brac tomorrow at Lehman Scott at six thirty. And we'll be in East End on Monday at, North Side, North Side Civic Center at seven on Monday. I don't think the North Side meeting, it's gonna be live broadcast, so you can join us. We set it at seven, so we have time to fight the traffic on the way up there. So meet us there. And if you're in Cayman Brac, or if you want to start your long weekend early, Lehman Scott tomorrow evening at six thirty. Mr. Moderator, I've taken away your job. Sorry, sir.
No, no, that's a good idea. Weekend in the Brac sounds like what everyone needs. Thank you again so much to everyone for joining us. Of course, remember, if, if you're able to join us again tomorrow in Cayman Brac and the other days that the chief officer mentioned. Of course, stay tuned to social media on all official government social media pages, including the Ministry of Caymanian Employment and Immigration for dates of when a meeting is coming close to you. Again, immigrationconsultation@gov.ky if you have any questions or comments that you want considered before the bill is finalized. Thank you again so much for joining us, and please enjoy your refreshments at the back. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe going home.